Good evening. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the St. Helena City Council for Tuesday, March 28th. Councilmember Ellsworth, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Coburnstein.
Here.
All right. That takes us to public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us with respect to matters not on our agenda. The time limit is three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. I wanted to report that there's no reportable action out of the closed session that was held at 4:00 p.m. today.
All right. You jumped the gun on 5.1, but that's okay.
Do we have a... Just don't start my time till the slide goes up. Mary Stevenson with our town, St. Helena, we'd like to make a short presentation on a housing opportunity.
Do I have a clicker or do you do it? Okay, you can go.
As you know, we have a USDA rural development grant to do technical assistance in building self-help houses here in St. Helena. The first eight will be on McCorkle, on city-owned property, and we have money to build another 10 to 11 units, and we need to identify a site for those units by the end of the year to maintain our funding. Go ahead. This is Brinkley Court, which will start construction on the site development. It will start in May. Next one. And our idea is to put a very similar project on the city-owned lot at the corner of Railroad and Fulton Avenue. This could hold up to 11 townhouses, three-bedroom, one and a half baths, similar to McCorkle. It can also hold a brand-new teen center. You can hit the slide. Which could be this last unit with a fenced-in yard. And it could also possibly hold some small rental apartments for firemen. We think this is an ideal location that's close to shopping, services, and schools. It's near a bus line. It's got adequate off-street parking, minimal traffic challenges, and the current structure is near the end of its usefulness. We think it could also fulfill other city needs besides housing. As we talked about, we could do a new teen center built to suit, cover the cost with our grants and loans, and have the same location that the teens like now. And it could also possibly include some smaller rental apartments for the firemen. And you can't really get much closer to the firehouse and across the street.
Next.
There's a potential revenue generation possibility in that several developers are looking for ways to support affordable housing so they can get their projects through. And they've come to us wanting to do small projects, and it's hard to find those in the city. So if we could put together a combination discounted purchase and donation program to actually secure the land from the city, this could offset the loss of rental revenue and could also possibly provide some general fund contribution.
Okay.
So our funding source would be similar to what we have today, but we could also add developer contributions. We think that a discounted purchase of land would provide revenue to the city. It would complete Reno requirements through 2023. It would satisfy the collateral settlement through 2020. And we think it would be the best and highest use of this land given the city's housing We're ready to go. All the groundwork's completed. Brinkley Court's design and plans and legal documents are available. We have a list of qualified applicants. We have 24 in our pool to date and continue to take applications. And we're holding a lottery this summer to create a priority list for Phase Two. So our proposed next steps would be that you put this on your agenda in the near future. We're hoping for April. That you share some financial data and property appraisal information with us so we can put together some financial scenarios. And that you authorize your grant manager to work with us on possible funding sources and scenarios for supplemental funding. Almost made three minutes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Hello, my name's Mike Qualia. I represent my father, Raymond Qualia, who lives on the corner of Pratt and 29. Just like to bring up some concerns with the Los Alcoas project that is going on over there, scheduled to open here shortly, understanding that, you know, some of the city council members on here weren't on the council when it was passed. The biggest thing, several things are safety issues. One is parking. Do not believe there is enough parking up on the site to support the patrons, especially with the added room expansion that was allowed, as well as the brewery that was allowed. The dining room seats, 154 seats, including outside dining, which will be serving also additional people coming to dine at the restaurant from the community. Currently, employees do not have anywhere to park up there. So speaking to some employees that have parked along Pratt and 29, I asked them, they were instructed to park on Pratt Avenue. Currently, we have a vineyard there that we farm since about 1900, which is making it impossible to do that now. Can't turn my tractor, can't get my equipment in there to effectively do what we need to do there. And that is agricultural land there. So with all that being said, we believe there's a decreased value to our property now as a result of the hotel project. One of the bigger concerns, even more than parking, is the traffic. I invite all the city council members, including the mayor, to come down there and have a seat on the corner of 29 and Pratt, and a lawn chair on the sidewalk if you are so brave. I spent a little bit of time out there over the weekend. Nearly two pedestrians hit in the crosswalk. Cars extremely braking hard. We need a light there, or something. The intention at Los Alcoas is also to valet park, which means they're going to have to cross both lanes of traffic to get over to the Behringer property where they lease some parking space to get their patrons' vehicles over there. Have concerns about the liability to me farming the property there with all the cars in the area. The intersection's already been rated an F for service, and I think we all know that. F for service equals F for safety. So please, I implore you, go out, take a look. Just spend a couple hours there during the day. My last concern is fire safety. I got some serious concern when I walked around the site up there the other day, that with the stalls fully parked and the hotel fully operational, that a fire truck could effectively manage up in the area up there to, one, effectively fight a fire, let alone allow people to exit the property with the one entrance that is on Highway 29. Hope that never comes to fruition, that we ever have to see that. However, in the event that that takes place, please, go up there and take a look, and you can see what I'm talking about. So anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Griffin, Mark Street, St. Helena. To echo on Mr. Qualia here about the valet parking up there, if you think about it, when a customer comes up there to stay and spend the night, they drive in, so they came in the intersection one time, the person at valet parked their car, leaves, so that crosses the intersection a second time, then they go pick it up, the people that moved it, a third time, and then when you got to go home, they got to go get your thing and bring it back again for a fourth time. So we've quadrupled the traffic just by one person going in and out of that place. With the parking issue, I suggest that, or I urge the Public Works Department to go out there and paint the curvature of Park Street on both sides of Pratt Avenue, because the cars now are parking right out. They either are like this, sticking out in the middle of the street, or they're on the angle. Today, the police department ticketed one of the head guys there, because they don't care. They park anywhere. Pratt and Cornellas and other bad spot where they park on the corners, now with the painting of the curb on Main Street on the one side of the street there, all the traffic was there now is going up Elmhurst, and they're parking on the corner there. When you come down Elmhurst, you can't see north or south to pull out of Main Street. So the bottom line, you're creating more unsafe intersections in this town by all this traffic going on there. So I urge the Public Works to get out there and take a look at it. There's a hydrant now on Pratt Avenue there that I've watched now. They've cited two people now so far in the last two days for parking in front of the hydrant, because the workers, the people that are going to be there working, they just don't care. They park anywhere. Today, they parked right in my driveway, pulled my garbage cans out of the way up the sidewalk, and, you know, what am I supposed to do? Now my garbage can't get picked up today because they pulled the garbage cans off the street and parked where my cans were today. So now I got full garbage cans. So I don't know what to tell you, but I urge the council, Public Works Department, to go out there, get out of City Hall, and look at these issues. And they're not going to go away. We need to address them now before they get going too far. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Hi there. I'm Elaine Demann. I'm going to echo a little bit of what the two gentlemen just said. I walk around town an awful lot, and I just want to say that those flashing lights that you're putting in to help pedestrians cross Highway 29 at Charter Oak are quite ineffective. Today, I had to finally wave down the cars and point to the lights so they could see them and know that somebody was trying to cross the road there. Being a pedestrian is not easy or safe in this town, just because of the amount of traffic and the distractions of the people driving. So I don't know how we can address this, but something needs to be done. Another thing that I've noticed in my neighborhood is a landscaping vehicle has started parking there overnight, and the workers come and pick it up in the morning and leave their cars there. So it's not a huge deal, but it's the kind of thing that can kind of grow into something that could be pretty difficult for the residents if this kind of thing continues with people using residential streets as parking areas for their out-of-area landscaping vehicles. And finally, I just really wish we could have some enforcement of drivers in town who are really quite blatantly talking on their cellphones while they're driving. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment? Okay, let me close the public comment. We'll go to reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. Let me begin with the city manager, Mr. Pennell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have one item this evening. I received correspondence from Leigh Ann Link, the county executive officer, inviting or requesting each manager to invite their respective governing bodies to consider appointing two members of the council to meet with their colleagues on April the 21st at 10:00 a.m. at the county executive's office to discuss marijuana policy within Napa County. She goes on to say, "As you may recall, I mentioned this at the last managers' meeting. While a suggestion was made at the managers' meeting to hold a forum, it may be advantageous for the electeds to meet in a smaller group initially. To that end, I suggest meeting sometime in early to mid-April. If your city is interested, would you please have your council designate your two electeds and let me know who is selected?" Under your direction, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to calendar this for our next agenda.
Please do.
Okay.
Ms. Metz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I have two items to report from our grants manager. The first is our nonprofit grant applications for the fiscal year 1718 budget. They are due by this Friday at 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. And then the second item is regarding Upper York Creek project. It is moving along, and the city did recently begin drawing down on the EPA grant, which is really important for the city. What it does mean is that the city will not be impacted by the freeze on EPA grants initiated by the president. So that's a very good thing for the city, that we're able to do the initial drawdown on it.
And EPA is paying?
Yes.
That's the key point.
We have already received the funding, and it has been deposited.
Right. Ms. Black, the city attorney?
Nothing further.
All right. Mr. House?
Nothing to report, other than we are eager to get the building official position advertised for hiring, and that is an item on the agenda today, so we may discuss it. It's on consent.
All right. Ms. Smithies?
I just wanted to plug, the wastewater achievement feasibility study workshop is being held tomorrow night at the fire station from 6:30, 8:30. We welcome the public for comments and feedback. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Coburnstein?
Yeah, I'd like to raise something for us to perhaps put on a future agenda, and that would be to start to institute what are sometimes called pre-application conferences at the planning commission level. I have heard and seen this with big projects and small projects, that without committing as to how you would vote, there are some people out there who would greatly benefit from some reaction or direction from the planning commission early on. And I'll give you one example and the reason I'm proposing this. To get to the planning commission, you know, there are the fees, and then there are the expenses you pay for your plans to get them to the definitive level that allows them to come to the planning commission. I know of a couple who would like to put a second unit on top of their garage. It involves a variance. They don't have a way to find out if that's even possibly going to fly without spending the money for the hearing and the full-blown plans. I mean, we've also had some larger projects where, by the time they get to the planning commission level, they have expended considerable amounts of money on planning and paying their professionals, arrive at the planning commission only to be somewhat surprised at the reaction or comments. I think it'd be a worthwhile thing to institute. I think we should look into it and perhaps offer it as sort of another thing besides these neighborhood meetings, but something that would give people some early feedback at the planning commission level.
Sounds like an item for future discussion here at the council. Mr. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I have a number of items. I attended the WIC, the Watershed Information Committee, and saw there a, they had some presentations on fish and the fish in the Napa River, and we also talked about a watershed symposium that's coming up. That's coming up on May 24th in Napa at the Opera House, and that'll be an excellent chance for the community to really interact with the county and the cities about how we're looking at our watersheds and water supply. So that's on May 24th, and you can just go to the Napa County Watershed Symposium online or contact me, and I can get you in touch on that. Few more county issues. The definition of agriculture issue is going to come back before the supervisors on April 4th. There's a critical item in Napa County, because the definition of the word agriculture, it's being discussed to change what agriculture means. I argue that that word belongs to all of us, that a select group can't just take that word and change it. So April 4th, that's at the county. I can give anybody more information about that. The changes would allow more marketing, marketing to be equated to farming under the title of agriculture, conceivably, and I'm not being flippant here. If a roller coaster is argued to be wine marketing, could that fall now under agriculture? This is the, sort of the stakes we're looking at. The helicopter issue has been pushed till May. There's a helipad that's going to be proposed in Napa. A lot of people feel that it will open the door to helicopter, a lot of helicopter use in Napa County, private helicopter use, and that might certainly impact our quality of life and our environment and our wildlife. So those are three county issues. Two St. Helena issues that have brought great concern to me are the Los Alcoas parking and safety issue. I went down and spent a couple hours there the other day, and we have a situation. And I, to the point that I believe we should call a special meeting to discuss it, because something's going to need to be done, I believe, before somebody gets hurt. We have a pedestrian crossing zone. All the people who are parking on Pratt are walking over to work, and you have cars and trucks coming at 50 miles an hour through that tunnel, and cars trying to pull out on both sides. Pratt isn't even open yet. We have people parking, spending the night in their cars, using vacant house yard as a restroom. It's a situation that needs to be looked at, and as a community, I believe we have a responsibility to all the members of our community to make sure their quality of life is protected by us. So I encourage everybody in the next couple days to go down to that area and understand the situation, and if we can call a special meeting, I think that would be a good thing. And the final thing is, that I also think could be included in that special meeting, is we'll be talking a little bit about the water rates later, but I got a call from a number of small businesses who are going to be severely impacted by some reclassifications of the water rates. Some of these businesses had water rates under $100 a month, and they were moved up to things like $800 a month. So for a small business, this is really impactful, and I think we realize we have to make adjustments, and probably people were paying maybe less than they should have been, but this kind of substantial jump at one time, it makes me worry that in three or four months, somebody who's running on a small margin might get into trouble. And I know that we're going to have our ad hoc committee look at these issues, but I feel like this one is so critical to our small businesses that it would be worth having a special meeting soon to discuss it, to let our small businesses know that we are trying to find an interim solution while the ad hoc committee works. So those are my comments.
All right. Mr. Doring?
I don't have any particular, other than the items that were brought up today. It seems like maybe we should give the Public Works Department a little bit of time to kind of sort of coalesce and look at the issues at the Pratt Avenue, and maybe report back to us, to see whether a special meeting is in order. I think that's the first step, have our staff kind of take a look at that issue and maybe provide some feedback to us with respect to the proposed housing plans and parking plans and those kinds of things. I don't, I'm not sure, a special meeting may be in order, but I think at least we need to investigate that. I'm familiar with that area, because I turn left every day at one block over, so I understand the issue. But I'd like to give our staff a chance to at least investigate the issue and report back to us. And maybe if there is a special meeting that needs to be called for some policy direction, then I think that would be appropriate. The other thing is the Our Town proposal. I think probably April is a little bit, probably undoable, but it would be interesting to have that proposal come forward. I'm really concerned about, you know, outreach and stakeholders and notification and, you know, those kinds of things. It's important you introduce the subject, but now there's a lot of work that needs to be done to see if this is even viable. So I would look to the planning director to see if there's any time in either April or May to have a more in-depth proposal, so that we can study all of, you know, the issues involved, including, really what is important to me, is finding housing for our firefighter members. That is critically important, and so if there's an opportunity there, then I think we should explore that. But there's, obviously, you can see there are a number of issues that were raised in just that three-minute presentation.
Mr. White?
Nothing.
All right.
I did have, I forgot one item, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to remind council and the community that on Thursday, April the 6th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., we'll be having our annual goal session featuring the executive staff of the city. It'll be right here, starting at 4:00 p.m.
All right. I would add that the county is running a workshop this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 at Robert Louis Stevenson Middle School in the multipurpose room. It's sort of a visioning process for the county. They're running them in all the cities, and Thursday evening is St. Helena night for the county. I would also like to add that last Tuesday, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, I attended, along with the other mayors, when Supervisor Pedrosa read a proclamation dealing with All the mayors, of course, supported the county proclamation, and it will be coming back to St. Helena for reading and adoption at our next meeting. It's been adopted by the town of Yountville, and I believe it will be adopted by, formally adopted by the city of Calistoga at its next meeting in April. But anyhow, that's a process that's underway. One further thought here, which is that normally, or in the past, I shouldn't say necessarily normally, but in the past, we've canceled our second meeting in July, and I would ask the council to think about that and express your views with respect to that at our next meeting. All right. That then takes us to our consent calendar, and I'm going to read off the items, and any item can be pulled from consent, either at the request of a council member or a member of the public. First item, 7.1, consideration and proposed approval of regular meeting minutes of February 14, 2017. Next item, 7.2, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number Two to the Memorandum of Understanding between the Napa Valley Transportation Authority and the City of St. Helena for fixed route and on-demand shuttle service through the Vine Shuttle. 7.3, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving outstate travel for Grants Finance Manager Tracy Prokosky to attend the Government Finance Officers Association Annual Conference in Denver, Colorado. 7.4, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution authorizing Robert Louis Stevenson Museum to install a temporary display structure at the corner of Adams Street and Library Lane. 7.5, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution authorizing Amendment to Unrepresented Compensation Resolution to duly approve and adopt the publicly available pay schedules in accordance with the requirements of California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5, to reflect the reclassification and compensation schedules for the chief building official to same classification salary range as Assistant Public Works Director.
I'd like to pull that one.
All right. 7.6, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution authorizing General Fund Reserves to fund a new recreation supervisor position in the Recreation Department for a cost of $18,348 for the remainder of fiscal year 2016, 2017. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve consent items 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, and 7.6.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
I'm sorry, yes.
White.
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Okay, that would take us back to 7.5. And let's see, that's Ms. Robinson, staff report.
Did you want me to review the staff report, or do you want to jump into the questions?
Well, maybe Ms. Coburnstein has a specific question.
Well, I mean, maybe for the benefit of the public, review it, but my question here is, I would just like more information. I'm not really prepared to vote on this this evening. I do think there's a point where we need to understand whether we can contract for some services as opposed to having permanent staff positions. And I know that people come and go. I don't think it's always for money. It has to do with other considerations as well, and I would just like a little more information before we raise the floor on this particular classification.
Did you want me to go? I can do a review of the audience, if they haven't had an opportunity. Okay, so tonight before you, we're asking you to reclassify the compensation schedule for the chief building official to the same classification and salary range as the Assistant Public Works. A little background, so prior to 2012, the city of St. Helena contracted out for building services, which included plan check, building inspections, and then building official duties. And around March, in March 2012... It has to do with other considerations as well and I would just like a little more information before we raise the floor on this particular classification.
Did you want me to go? I can do a review of the audience if they haven't had an opportunity. Okay, so tonight before you, we're asking you to reclassify the compensation schedule for the chief building official to the same classification and salary range as the Assistant Public Works. A little background, so prior to 2012, the city of St. Helena contracted out for building services which included plan check, building inspections, and then building official duties. And around March, in March 2012, the city, we organized and then they did create a city-staffed building official to provide substantial reduction in costs. The position was filled in April of 2012, then in January of 2013, the position was vacated and at that time, the city had decided to not fill the position and they reinstated a contracted services, but it was for part-time building and building official services. Then on October 13th, 2015, city council did approve a resolution authorizing the reinstatement of the city staff building official and the position was filled November of 2015. And the building department was very successful and provided much-needed services and Noah can speak to that later, but unfortunately, in February of 2012, this chief building official resigned his position and having accepted a position with another local municipality. One of the city council objectives for 2016-17 was to provide the community with a functional and safe city by supporting and maintaining city staff. So in the last five years, just a little history on the human resources side, the city has lost 17 employees to other local agencies or private sectors. The remarkable thing that I found was that in the last year alone, nine of those were, nine of the 17 were resignations, so that represents 53% of that number. So we did research comparable agencies for building officials. We did a comparison just in Napa County back in June, but because we have lost employees to nearby jurisdictions because of their locality, we did include Lea, Santa Rosa, and Petaluma. And because of that, if you look at the average salaries, the chief building official would be on the low end, 13% below average, and then on the high end of the salary, meaning we have five different steps, on that high end, they are less than 14%. So in talking with Noah, the director, we looked at where we should place the salary and we have a classification, the Assistant Public Works Director, and that if we put that position in that same classification, we would actually only bring the chief building official to par. So on the low end, they would be right at average and then at the high end, they're still below par. And so as far as the adopted budget, because we would ideally only have two months to fill the, two months remaining as far as the fiscal year, we would only see, we wouldn't have to ask for a salary, any kind of transfer from the general fund because we have salary savings and so we don't have any there and then for the fiscal year, we would actually already budget for it, so we wouldn't ask for any more additional funds, it would just be proposed. And then if Noah could tie in.
Yeah, I'd really like to speak to this issue. So in my tenure here, which has been relatively short, I've been here since May of 2015. When I was hired, we did contract for building official services, so we used a consultant firm to do both building inspection services and building plan check services and then also fill in as the building official. There are certain duties under the California Building Code, which only the building official or someone with that title can implement or to oversee. In that budget, we budgeted $228,000 for those services. Through my tenure, I was able to essentially recognize significant staff or budget savings by filling that position with a permanent staff member. So under the proposed increase, that's before the council tonight, the total cost for a building official would be $165,000, a little bit less than that. That's full compensation, so that's assuming a family, medical plan, pension costs, and all the financial compensation associated with that position. So just on the surface alone, based on previous budget amounts, there was significant cost savings. Obviously, we can't speak to say that it's guaranteed that the budget or the amount needed to cover plan check services moving forward would be the exact same because our plan check services go up and down depending on applications. I will say, separate from just the budget savings, some of the issues that have plagued our department frankly and the expectations that the citizens have for the services that are provided have been because we have used contract staff so much from, this is just my professional opinion, but because the people who are contract are hired to come in, do a service, and they go home. There's no ownership over the position. They don't have the type of commitment that a hired staff person has with regards to internal morale and how you engage with other staff members, but then also how you engage with the public and the relationship that you build with individuals as you go out and do these inspections. It's worth noting, a building official oftentimes is more of an administrative position than a field position. However, how St. Helena utilizes the building officials, they conduct plan check services in-house, they conduct building inspections in the field. I rely on them heavily to do code enforcement because we have no code enforcement staff or budget and so having someone that's a staff member allows me to then add to their workload. We got this code enforcement complaint, I need you to go out and check it out and verify whether there's issues, but I wouldn't have the ability to do that with a contract building official or building inspector because that's not in the scope of their work. Obviously, we could re-rise the contract or propose a contract that included that scope, but there are additional costs that would be associated with it. So stepping back, when the building official, Darrell Mays, took a position down valley with the city of Napa, I did look at the options associated with going back to just consultant services, however, for multiple reasons, including just pure budgetary, but then also the benefits you get from having a permanent staff member. Staff is recommending that the council approve this increase in the salary and it's primarily to also ensure that we get a quality applicant for the position. You know, it's my goal to bring people into the department that are excited to come to work every day, that like doing the type of work that they do, and that also want to be with St. Helena for a portion of their career. They want to be here for a while and build the relationships that I mentioned with the public and the staff. And so for that reason, we are recommending that this council increase the salary for the building official. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any further initial comments of staff? Let me open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak at public hearing on this issue? I'll close the public hearing and I'll invite any further council discussion. Mr. White?
Well, I would agree with Noah. I've been here long enough to see many contract inspectors. Gosh, I think we had contract inspectors from 2009 or even before that, all the way up until Darrell. And I think there was a marked difference and with the cost savings, I think it's, as I'll say, it's a no-brainer that, you know, we keep going down, I mean pursue that and try and get somebody more permanently here. And I still think that, you know, we can share services with Calistoga as we had approved and have some more savings back and forth with that and with having a permanent building official, so that's my opinion.
Mr. Doring?
Well, you make a very convincing persuasive argument. I had a question about, do you have information about how Yountville runs its building inspections? And how, they contract out and does that work or what is it about that organization that appears to be successful? I'm just trying to make a fair comparison.
Yountville, 100% accurate in that Yountville uses pure consultant services for their building official. I haven't spoken directly with them to get their perspective on their satisfaction with it. I know it's a part-time situation for them. I think they frankly have less activity than we do because the size of their city is smaller. I can't speak to any hard data, I haven't reviewed that, I just know that their jurisdiction is smaller, they have a smaller staff in general, they have less permanent activity in general, but I haven't engaged with them to see their satisfaction. We are using their building official currently, that's the same individual who we're sharing with them on consultant services.
Which that building official was working part-time in Calistoga until Calistoga hired a full-time position for their building official.
And I have spoken significantly with Calistoga, who did have the model of a consultant and prior to, just recently, they hired a full-time staff. So they changed their model, I think in reaction to seeing some increase in development activity, the need for code enforcement, and the benefit of having a permanent staff that I mentioned earlier. And I know I can speak to that because I have discussed it with them significantly.
Thank you.
So this is one step in getting a permanent building instructor and just sort of laying the groundwork of the salary that would be something that would be attractive to somebody and then that's the first step. And so there's still discussion at some point if, before it comes to that, about using consultants, but this doesn't lock it in that we're going down that road, it just sets it up if we decide to go that way.
Well, so it's, staff's role is to, we administer the department, so if the, regardless frankly of whether the council approves this salary increase or not, staff will be undergoing a recruitment to fill the building official position. To your point though, if our recruitment is not successful in that we don't get a candidate who can provide plan check services, building inspection services, and has some code enforcement experience, that's not an individual that, basically, staff wouldn't hire somebody unless they meet all of the expectations that we have, which is partially why we're asking for the increase, so we can make sure we get quality applicants to our recruitment. But if the recruitment's not successful, we'll continue down the consultant model because we, if we're going to hire somebody, it needs to be a good person, a good fit for the organization.
All right. I might add, Councilman Ellsworth, this will not come back to council if it's approved tonight. You'll have another shot at it when you review the proposed budget for 1718, but typically it's a ministerial act once this policy decision is made this evening.
But just to carry that a little bit further, if this decision is made tonight and the person is hired, we can't reduce the salary for the next year, right? I mean, they're going to be hired with the expectation that that's what they're going to be paid.
That's correct.
Yeah, I would just like more information on the model, particularly in Yountville. Seems to be working for them. We use certain contract services, we use some in the planning department, we use them for some public works plan review, I believe. And I think salary is not always the answer and the telling thing to me, looking at some of this, is that we have people who come and they stay here for about a year and then they leave for whatever reason. So just in an effort to take a really close look at our finances, I would appreciate more information on the other option.
Well, to my way of thinking, staff has presented an excellent report. It's been well explained here and I support the staff recommendation.
So I move to approve the staff recommendation.
Is there a second? I will second it. Ms. Black?
Councilwoman White?
Yes.
Galbraith?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
No.
Doring?
No.
Cobberstein?
No.
All right. I'm understanding if you could check with the town of Yountville and see, provide more information, we'll put it on the docket next time.
We're happy to have a special meeting, Noah. I just, I would like to get a little bit more information on the contract portion of it, just for direction purposes, the contract services versus this proposal and basically the Yountville model. It would be helpful, quicker the better.
So this is, this direction is essentially to put off the recruitment for the building official position in order for staff to conduct more research, bring back the item, and present it to council for a second vote? Okay.
That then takes us to, may I go back? New business. First one is city council discussion and direction of goals, objectives, and strategy for the newly formed Ad-Hoc Utility Rate Committee and appoint two city council liaisons as to the committee. So I will open that up for initial council discussion. I might say that I undertook to prepare with input from council member Doring, a document that is entitled Council Direction and it follows, I think quite faithfully, council member Cobberstein, your initial memorandum, so I'd like to pass that out so people can look at it. I have copies here. I've got extra copies here if anybody else wants to look at it. Sure, I don't know whether it can be put up on the screen or not.
I think we have two members here.
Yeah. hearing? Let me open it up to the public hearing. Again, this is, the effort here is to provide direction to the ad hoc committee and then to appoint two city council members as liaison to the committee. That's our agendized item.
Kathy Coldiron. I have some concerns regarding the committee members. I think you may remember that I came to the town hall meeting and I said that I was hopeful that the, one of the goals that we would integrate into more committees would be that the committee members are more representative of the community. How many women applied to be on the ad hoc committee? I noticed we only have one. Did any other women apply? If so, why were they not appointed? At least 50% of the committee should be women.
I think your comments may be more relevant, 8.3, which we're going to get to.
You want me to wait to get there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Again, as I said, the effort here was to be faithful, Ms. Cobberstein, to your resolution.
You did a nice job.
And I did work with Mr. Doring and I think this provides a good charter for the committee and I would ask the council to approve it.
I just have one comment on the timing here. I would appreciate it if we get some feedback from the committee in May or so on the revenue side, if there are recommendations coming to us, say for instance, with respect to the York Creek Dam, that we of the council are made aware of them so we can take them into consideration and, you know, decide what we're doing. But otherwise, I think what you added here is basically a given as to how they should proceed.
The proposed budget will include some of those capital improvement projects that we anticipate needing funded.
we anticipate needing funding in the very near future in response to that question.
And also, um, uh, since I think at the last meeting we discussed that you and I would be the liaison and has to be approved at this meeting, but, uh, there's plenty of opportunity at the, at the meeting of the, uh, ad hoc committee to suggest that to them.
Okay.
So at this point, I would ask the-
I have a, a few comments, yeah. Uh, I was gonna show a little video, unfortunately couldn't get it to work, but it was a clip, just a little two-minute clip on a community in central California. I believe it's Teleri, who's basically lost their water security. They've lost their water equity, um, and they're surrounded by thriving agriculture. But the town is without water. Um, and that may have changed since the film came out, but, um, one of my concerns is that we, um, make sure that the rate structure protects the citizens of our community who, um, don't have the, uh, uh, don't have the means to, to, uh, to go head-to-head against large corporations. I brought a picture of a watering hole in Africa where, you know, everybody uses it, the lions as well as the zebras. And everybody's gotta, we've gotta work together because if, um, one group takes the water, the other group, uh, diminishes and we lose our system and, um, so I think it's, it's critical that we discuss water equity and water security as we look at the rate structures and the equities in the rate structures. One thing I'm concerned about is that if, because we conserve water, our water revenues went down, which apparently happens all, I've got, happens all over the state, um, and I think even may have happened in Calistoga at one point where everybody did so well conserving that they were told, well, yeah, the water rates are going up. But then I wonder if, then the next year we lose, use less water because it's more expensive, and so the water fund gets even less money. So I'm just wondering if we're looking at some kind of a spiral that we need to address now and say, hey, how do we build a structure that we know is gonna be sustainable? Um, I know that, that the principle that the Water Enterprise Fund needs to be a self-sufficient fund, uh, but I wonder with, um, if there's drought, I, one of the, the things I downloaded talked about a city that was proactive about planning for droughts, even if they weren't in a drought, so that the next time it happened, they had funds set aside so they didn't have to raise the rates and get into this spiral. Um, anyway, I think we need to look at absolutely every aspect as if every member on the community is looking at their own home, their own family's money and budget, or their own business's money and budget. This is, this is the livelihood and the water security and water equity of our community, and there's nothing more critical.
All right. Uh, at this point, uh, I'm not going to respond substantive. I agree with much of what you say. Of course. Uh, and by the way, uh, uh, the rate study certainly, uh, undertakes to make assumptions with respect to future, uh, water consumption, uh, and it will be up to the committee to assess whether those are reasonable or not. And reasonable minds can, can differ, but, uh, at least the, the last committee and the consultant certainly looked into that problem, and there's a discussion of it in the rate study itself. Uh, but again, the point here is not a substantive discussion. Uh, at this point, I would ask, uh, the council to approve the direction, uh, that I provided to the, uh, uh, council for its consideration.
So moved.
Very second?
Second.
All right. Uh, Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Okay, that would take us to the next item, uh, eight point two. This is, uh, from council member Coburnstein, "A discussion of possible assignment to the Planning Commission of the task to review our noise ordinance and make recommendations for any proposed changes." Ms. Coburnstein?
Yeah, I, I brought this, uh, for a couple reasons. Um, first, it was a topic raised at our goal-setting session where we heard, uh, a lot of goals of the community. We didn't really formulate our own specific lists of goals, um, but there were concerns raised about the effects of noise pollution in the community, um, requests that we take a good look at the permit process, uh, we consider an appeal system, you know, we clarify some aspects of it. Other people addressed, uh, livability in our residential areas. And there are a couple of letters here that I believe, um, were distributed to the council about some people expressing concerns about, uh, weekend music. In some people's view, it's noise, um, in close proximity to residential neighborhoods. Um, I think we need to look at what our zoning ordinance, uh, really provides, uh, in terms of noise. This came up also, I think, with the Davies, um, case before I was here, and the question of rooftop music. Uh, and it, it appears in fact that the zoning ordinance doesn't allow, uh, exterior music in certain zoning districts. Uh, we also have a, a new plan coming towards us that I, appears to me to sort of lower the acceptable decibel level that's right at the residential property line. So I, I think we have some conflicting, uh, things going on in our ordinances. Uh, summertime is about to arrive, and I think it would be good to look at them, particularly the outdoor music. Um, we are gonna have a hotel opening any day, I hope.
We all hope.
Um, and, you know, some of the neighbors on Granger Way, uh, may find that some of the people at the hotel, um, are suffering some of the same noise issues they are. So I, I do think it deserves some attention, and I would suggest we send it to the Planning Commission to take a look at.
Any further initial, uh, uh, comment? Let me open it up to the public hearing and then, uh, yes, Mr. Bell?
Hi. I don't know if anything has changed in this city regarding, uh, the enforcement of noise problems, but I'd just like to share my experience with the council, what happened in our yard, in our, should say my neighborhood, about four or five years ago. And we discovered that if there is a noise complaint given to the police department about noise after ten or eleven, twelve, one o'clock at night, that the, basically the police department goes out and warns the people and, and tells them there has been a complaint. Um, if there's a subsequent complaint, um, there are no citations issued in this city because it's considered to be a, uh, a, a public nuisance and the, and the only way a citation can be issued on a second or a third offense is if the, if the neighbor to the, uh, or the complaining party wants to sign a citizen's arrest form, then there is a citation issued. But, um, this is the way it was four or five years ago. We went, we went to the, at that time, the city mayor, um, and, and, uh, it was a difficult, difficult situation. We had seven neighbors going and having problems with this. And, uh, it, I'm hoping that if this issue can be, uh, looked at, that we can come, come up with some enforcement way of, of, of dealing with this issue rather than having citizens have to issue citations to their neighbors because it, it, it makes a terrible situation in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further, any further public comment at this point? Well, let me close public comment and invite, uh, council, uh, discussion. My, let me begin myself here. I was not on the council at the time. It dealt with the leaf blower issue.
I was.
But it took a lot of time.
It was a long time.
It took a lot of time. My concern here is not that this shouldn't be looked at at some point. It's really a matter of timing. I would like to see us get through the general plan, get that adopted, uh, and, and not put what could be a long contentious issue, uh, onto the overloaded, uh, uh, planning department, uh, at this time. Uh, that's, that's my, that's my sense of it. I, I really would like for us to get the general plan done, hopefully adopted, uh, and then work from there, uh, where we have a lot of ordinances that are gonna have to take a look at. And I have no problem at that point with making this one a high priority.
I'm just concerned about the people who, uh, have summer concerts from July through October, um, you know, that are happening in close proximity to their homes. Um, you know, it's like another year of, um, i- if we could at least address that issue, uh, I, I think that would help some people.
All right, further?
I, I concur. I, I believe, you know, every week I hear more people saying, we're moving, we're leaving, we're leaving St. Helena because, um, our quality of life, our property values, we feel are being impacted. Um, we're, we're working off of a system that was installed years and years ago before changes came to the, the wine and tourism industries that changed their business models to see marketing events and parties as a, as a money-making event and, and also with, uh, short-term rentals becoming, uh, party houses. Um, and so I think we owe it to our citizens that we serve to, to be the ones that protect them rather than, uh, putting them in the position where they have to go protect themselves. Uh, I think that's our job, is to make sure that the, the people who've invested here for how, you know, some of them, their families have been here for over a hundred years, some of them fifty years. But we made a decision in the, in the seventies with the ag preserve, the sixties and seventies, you know, getting the ag preserve in there. Our general plan in St. Helena was, was kind of put in place to create a different kind of, uh, uh, model that, that looked at preserving open space and, uh, and it's created a rural area. And so noise levels, uh, can impact that and make, frankly, make people wanna move. And I, I just, I'm, I don't know that another year, some people are gonna move because of, of being unhappy in the home that they invested in. And so I think we need to address it, and, and maybe it doesn't need to be fully, you know, fleshed out, but I think we need some, some things in place that, that the, the local government can use to say, this is over the line, when it's over the line.
Can I, uh-
Sure.
Um, could I ask the police chief for some clarification on enforcement of, of the noise ordinance? Because I thought we had put some more teeth into enforcement when we did the leaf blower run around.
For that type of a violation for a noise ordinance for, um, a party, loud music, could be loud voices, it doesn't matter. If somebody complains, the only mechanism we have right now is the, a violation of the penal code to issue a citation. Unfortunately, we can't issue citations for, um, violation of disturbing the peace because we're not, we can't be a victim of disturbing the peace. Uh, the penal code's very clear. It has to be a, the, the victim or the offended person issuing the citation. We issue the citation, we write it, we fill it out, the offended person signs on it that they're, that they wanna make a citizen's arrest, and we issue it to the offending party. But it's not technically issued from, from us. It's a fine line, but-
Sure. And would that be the case no matter, I mean, we would have to make it a penal code violation? Or can we even do that with, uh-
Well, it already is a- It's already a penal code violation for us to issue a municipal-
So it really has to do with who the victim is?
Um, no, um, we, for, we have a municipal code violation on the books, we just can't issue a citation that has a fine attached to it at this point. Um, and that's more of a mechanism of, of getting somebody to, to pay up at this point for that citation. Um, it's not like the social host ordinance where we have the ability to, to make them pay up. It's more like the, um, some of the other ordinances that, that Director House and I have talked about that right now just don't have any teeth behind them.
In the case of something that's ongoing, is it something that we could enjoin, you know, uh, as opposed to paying fines?
You have the option to amend your code in such a manner to establish that violations of the noise ordinance would be considered a nuisance and, and would be subject to administrative citation. Um, it sounds like you don't have those provisions in your code right now. Um, but that, that is a determination that the council could make, and then you do have the rights, um, in a court of law to enjoin that sort of behavior. Um, I, I'm not sure how that would play out because once the violation occurs, it's done in terms of noise violation, right? It's not an ongoing occurrence that a court, a court would necessarily enjoin the behavior of. Administrative citation is probably your better avenue.
I'm wondering whether, uh, it might be useful to have, uh, our city attorney take a look at our ordinance. Uh, they probably have some depth on noise ordinances in the firm, uh, and come back to us and say, hey, uh, here are amendments that you might consider that makes your noise ordinance more susceptible to, uh, enforcement.
Yeah, I, I'm particularly concerned about the outdoor music venues or outdoor music that seems to be happening, um, in the summertime and in at least one case, virtually every weekend between July and October. I mean, that's when you wanna be outside, and you would like peace and quiet. Um, and it's not clear to me how that can occur. Maybe whoever is doing it can explain why they think they have the right to do that, but it, it's not clear to me under our ordinance how it's allowed. You know, music, as I understand it, it's allowed in the business district and the service commercial district as long as it's not audible outside the building. And so, uh, I'm, for these particular neighbors and for other neighbors who live around music venues, I'm curious to know how this can even be happening, um, besides what we can do to strengthen our enforcement.
Well, it, it does sound to me like it might be useful to have the city attorney, uh, take a look at this and, and respond back to us, uh, uh, within the next month if possible, uh, on this issue, uh, as, as a beginning point for further discussion, if that's okay with you.
Mr. Mayor, to clarify, would you like the city attorney to come back with a proposed ordinance or a general analysis of-
Well, I think a general analysis, but presumably, uh, there are cities that may have, uh, uh, specific language which could be used, uh, could be attached to the, to the memo that comes back to us, so, uh, that could be used as a basis for further explanation.
Certainly.
I was wondering if I could hear from you, Noah. Thank you.
I'd like to add a few, a few, um, points of information for the council to consider. So it sounds like there's somewhat two issues, uh, being discussed. One, the adequacy of the existing ordinance, uh, and its application. And I will tell you, um, through some of our code enforcement discussions and efforts, uh, we have worked with the city attorney to draft up some revisions to the, um, noise elements and the citation elements in an effort to grate more teeth and provide more teeth. It's just one of the things we haven't been able to push over the finish line. Um, as I said, I do rely on my building official often to do code enforcement. Unfortunately, that recruitment will be postponed a little bit. Uh, but adding to this situation, um, the noise ordinance doesn't live in the zoning code, so it's, it's a separate chapter. However, there are, um, there are numerous references to noise limitations in the zoning code as mentioned by, uh, Councilmember Coburnstein. But that's a separate issue from an existing non-conforming business who may be doing activities that are no longer allowed under the regulations. And Harold Smith is a perfect example. Um, Harold Smith operates their business without a use permit. If they were to come in today, they would be required to get a use permit. However, they've been operating, uh, prior to the city requiring use permits for their use, and so that's called existing non-conforming. Grandfathered is how many people, uh, term that. Um, so I, I'm aware of the concerns that the council has regarding the specific businesses. Um, however, that's a separate issue from, uh, revisions to the noise ordinance as it's currently written. If, if we change our rules today, um, if someone has been operating under the previous set of rules or a previous lack of rules, then that, it's, it's under a different category of use or a different way that the uses are being viewed. Um, so just to make sure that folks understand those differences.
Yeah, I'd like to understand exactly what people have been doing that maybe gave them a grandfathered right. Uh, you know, I mean, there, you may have had the right to have outdoor music once a season or twice a season or something. Does that mean you can do it every weekend? I don't, to me, that's an expansion of, of non-conforming use. So I'd really like to understand the basis under which some people believe they have a right to do it and whether our attorney agrees, um, and, you know, what if anything we could do about it.
Oh, that's, I just wanted to, to make the distinction and then identify that, that staff is aware of the issue that Mr. Belt raised, and we have been trying to make some efforts to address it. I don't have any information on existing businesses' use permits to share with the council tonight.
All right. I think, does the city attorney have enough from us at this point to proceed to memo? Okay, very good. Anything further here? All right. That takes us to eight point three.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Over here. Um, I would just like to make a, I want some clarification for, back on item eight point one.
Yes. Yes.
When Vice Mayor White made a motion to adopt your recommendations for the ad hoc committee-
It included the two liaisons.
I just wanted to make sure it did include both liaisons for Mayor Galbraith and Councilmember-
Did your second include that?
Just for the record, just for the record. Okay, thank you.
All right. Very good.
I knew you were going to ask that.
All right, that takes us to 8.3. This is Councilmember Ellsworth's issue.
Well, I wanted to bring this up, because I think we've got to have a discussion of how we set up committees and do nominations. Because I think we need to have a process that ensures that we get as close as we can to a balanced and inclusive committee that is filled with as many different perspectives from the spectrum we have in our community. The two, the two main points are looking at how we lay out nominations. At a recent committee nomination, the nominations were brought out one by one. And I felt that, while I was voting for the personal capability of each nominee, and felt comfortable with each nominee, getting towards the end of it, I realized that I had made assumptions that the inclusive aspect would be brought forth. And seeing three-quarters of the way through, that that might not be the case, it probably would have changed my vote earlier. And I realized it was impossible to know how to cast my votes for a balanced committee with a mix of gender, a mix of income level, and any ethnicity that we can. So I felt that a clearer, more transparent way would be for the nominations to be put all out in a slate, and then we could organize our votes separately, based on the slate, and how we separately saw the balance. With five people here, we should be able to get to that, have a better chance of getting to that balanced committee. That was one of my considerations. The other is, in terms of deadlines. I feel that if we have qualified applicants who have put in an application, and we get to a deadline, that I believe by extending deadlines, we open the door for perhaps some type of partisan, you know, we don't like that person, so we're going to keep going. You know, I just feel like having some sort of set deadline, or a council vote to extend the deadline, or, I think we have to have a discussion about it, so that we have a clear process for the future.
Okay. Let me, any further initial comment? Let me open up to the public comment. Does anybody wish to comment publicly?
Before you ever even picked the people on the ad hoc committee, the new group, I was thinking about this a long time ago, and I came to the town hall meeting and spoke, that we really should have committees that are more representative of the people in this town.
Excuse me, excuse me, do you mind adjusting that mic a little bit towards you, so that our audience can hear you?
Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. So when the ad hoc committee members were picked, and I don't know all of them, I ran into our mayor walking across the street, and I asked him if they picked them, and he said yes, and he gave me some names. Some of them I've heard of, and some of them I haven't. But it became apparent to me that all of them were men, except one woman. I don't have anything against men, but I think we should be more representative of the community, meaning that we should have about 50% women. We have 25% of the community are Hispanic people. I think we should have a Hispanic person on the committee. And then what about low income? I don't know if the people that are picked are low-income, but if they're not, then you've got to figure out a way how they're going to be represented. And even I was thinking about that. Okay, if they're not low-income or middle-income, how can you get some representation on that committee? So I was thinking, maybe there's a way you could work with the family center, and have six or seven different families that each member on that committee could interview, and say, how is this, how are these water rates going to affect your life? How do you feel about this? That's one way you could do it. I think maybe you could come up with some other ideas. But that's my feeling about the fact that the committee, as far as I know, and I don't have all the information, it doesn't sound very representative of the people that live here. And if you are so resistant to having all of the residents being represented on the committee, it's, I don't think that's a good idea, because then you end up with, you know, a pushback on what they recommend. And if you truly believe that the current water rate recommendation is our best option, then you should have faith that a more representative committee will be able to fairly judge the merits of any water rate hike. And I think without listening to the voice of the whole community, then it erodes the democratic process of our town, and it makes people lose respect for the people on the city council. And remember that there were 900 people that signed a petition, saying that they were not happy with the review of the first recommendation. So I think if you want to have a good feedback from the community, you should have a better representation of the people that live here, on the committee. And maybe incorporate this into a process, as Jeff was mentioning, for all the committees that you pick in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Belt?
Hi, Tracy Sweeney, 1407 Kearney Street. I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen, not as a member of the Planning Commission. And I just had two comments to make. One, in terms of extending the deadlines, I know in at least many of the recent appointments of committee is because no one has applied for the position. So I think one of the challenges in St. Helena is the lack of applicants. So I would applaud the fact that you can get a full committee, and I wouldn't, I don't think there's, at least as a citizen here, living here for 15 years, I have not seen that there has been any kind of nefarious activity. We just don't have enough people step up. And I think that that would, the idea of having to go, think that there's something wrong with how committee members are being appointed, I think the citizens at home should realize that that's probably not really the case, at least in my observation. And then I had a question, are you asking to change the appointment process? Because as I understand it, don't most committee members sit at the pleasure of the mayor? So it's really a discussion that happens on council, but the mayor appoints? So I'm just curious if that's, if you're asking to change that process.
Right, thank you. Any further public comment?
Yeah, I'm Bobby Monet, and I'm speaking as a private citizen, and not just for myself, but for some others. And, yeah, I mean, I had the same, many of the same feelings about the gender disparity, especially, and this committee had lots of applicants. This was not one of them that didn't have enough. I'm not sure if there were Latino applicants, I don't know. But I would suggest that you open up the committee again, get two more members, instead of seven, have nine, and have them be at least one woman and one Latino person. And if you did do that, I would strongly suggest, I was very disappointed that Pat Dell, with whom I have not always seen eye to eye, but in this context, I was really disappointed that she wasn't, that she wasn't part of the committee, because she has done so much work, and is so knowledgeable about it. Plus, she brings, you know, she would be another woman on that committee. So that, those are a few of my thoughts. Thank you.
All right. Any further, any further public discussion? Let me close the public discussion, fight council discussion. Maybe I could begin just briefly. My understanding, well, our rules are clear, that the mayor shall make appointments to commissions, committees, and boards, subject to city council approval. And the process that I followed has been the process that's been followed by the council, once it became clear that our prior process did not comply with state law. And so I undertake to appoint one at a time, invite a second, and see whether it commands council attention. Now, obviously, when I'm doing this, I'm looking for applicants that are likely to command broad council approval. And in the context of the ad hoc committee, I was looking for members who were objective, knowledgeable, young, old. I reached out to a wonderful Latino applicant, but I couldn't persuade him to apply. So I feel like we have a good, broadly-based, inclusive committee, that should carry great weight, in terms of its recommendations, if any, to the community. That's the way. But I followed the process that, as I understand it, is binding on us by state law, and, one at a time. And of course, I had one that I nominated, that, a wonderful person, who did not command three votes. But that's, you know, I try my best to come up with committees that I feel will work, and that will make solid recommendations, based upon their own discussions, that will be a benefit to the council, and to the community at large. That's my goal. Any further discussion? Oh, on the, on the extension, I think, of deadlines, I do believe that where we've extended the deadlines, it's been precisely because we received none or a few applicants. On occasion, this happened because we thought we were going to schedule committee appointments at a particular council meeting, and it didn't happen that way. It got extended two weeks, and there was no reason not to extend the application process for another few days. In general, so everybody knows, my process is to meet with every applicant if that applicant wishes to meet with me. And in the context of the ad hoc committee, I met with every applicant but two, two I did not need to meet with, because I know them so well, and neither of them were appointed. And then with respect to one, who was actually appointed, he advised he was too busy to meet with me, but I went ahead and appointed him anyway. So those things happen. I'm looking for competence, objectivity, and in the case particularly of this committee, both a combination of older people and younger people, younger people with children, who are going to be in the community for years, and who hope to have their children live here. Because when you look at these rates, one thing is very clear, is that there is sometimes generational issues, as to who should bear the burden of these rate increases. And I wanted a committee that thoroughly represented both sides of the equation. And I thought I achieved that, quite frankly. I also, quite frankly, coming in, didn't know whether the committee would be of five or of seven. I mean, so, in any event, my view of it is that we have a committee, we follow the proper process, and we need to move on.
Well, I would like to speak a bit more on it. I do feel that each member that was nominated was fully capable. The problem is, and I actually voted no on somebody who I probably would have voted yes on, if I had seen ahead of time what the makeup of the committee was. The fact that they're coming one by one, you cannot determine what the balance is going to be, and so you have to make an assumption that perhaps somebody will come up next that's going to balance. And, you know, if the law provides that the slate can be presented ahead of time, it gives five people the ability to discuss the balance, rather than it being on one person to determine what the balance is. I think that's why we're all here. We've been elected democratically to represent our citizens. And I feel that there's a transparency issue when I can't see what's coming. And if I can see what's coming, I can know how to balance it and vote, and the vote is a vote that is there for the citizens, too. It's not just my vote. It's, I need all the information, so I can figure out my balance.
All right, any further council discussion?
I just have a couple of comments. First, on the deadlines. You know, we're going to have a Planning Commission appointment coming up. I suggest we get our announcement out early, and that if we have one or two applications, we close it. I mean, having been in this process, I can tell you, it's very disconcerting to apply, and then have the deadline extended, and extended again. And to some of these people that this is happening to, we may never see them apply for a committee assignment again. And so I do think we need to pay attention to the deadline, and we can assist in that by getting the notice out early, and reminding people. We know there's something coming up to be appointed at the end of June. I don't think anybody here is trying to take away the power of the mayor to nominate, you know, and then we vote. But I do think a discussion is helpful, particularly when, as in the last case, we were appointing so many people, and we had so many applicants. I mean, it was, it was clear, not everybody was going to be appointed, and I would have felt a little more comfortable if we had talked about who we had maybe met with, and why we thought, you know, they would lend a particular expertise to the committee. I also would have been happy to disclose, and I think maybe we should, and I'll disclose right now. I asked one of the people who we appointed to apply, only one of the candidates, and that was Mark Smithers, because I really felt we needed financial expertise. And I think it's important for us to talk about who we've encouraged to apply, and why. Not just that we ask them, but what do we think people are bringing to the group that's helpful? You know, when we're just talking about even appointing one person, when we have a lot of applicants, I think it's good to know we have some consensus, and a little discussion would help that.
Any further discussion?
I guess if I was mayor, I'd probably like the process that you have, mayor. But I'm not. I do think there is some, no. There's some merit to, obviously respecting the law, but having some advanced sense of who your nominees will be, or who the mayor's nominees will be, for the reasons that I think Jeff articulately stated. It's not only for our sense of the cohesiveness of the group, but for the, for that shared collaboration with the community, so they can weigh in. My preference would be, and I'm just one person, would be to have the nominees listed in the staff report, so that we have the weekend to think about if there's, you know, seven people, you know, something like that, where you go, okay, the mayor's made his nominations through the staff report.
Oh.
And then you have a real approval process that's meaningful, it's a real advise and consent issue, and it's not taking away the power. We have the right to approve. But again, there is that sort of sense of, I don't know where you're going. I don't know where you're going with the next person. And so it makes you feel a little uncomfortable, when you're trying to do your own due diligence to get a balanced, well-represented community. So I can see your point, and I, I'm not challenging the way you did it at all. You know I don't think that at all. I think that the process can be improved with respect to transparency, and that sense of, we're all participating in the selection. Not only this council, which is elected, but also the folks in the community who can say, oh, I have a chance over the weekend to go, you know what, I might get up and speak in support of so-and-so, or I might not speak as favorably to somebody else. Then you have a real sense of community input. So that's really what I'm more focused on. I mean, I, obviously, I'd like to get my decisions made. I think we do have a really good group, frankly, but the process can be improved, I think. And I'm sure every community does it differently, and maybe we should explore that, to see how other communities do it, and obviously comply with the state law, which I'm cognizant of. There may be a state law issue there. Yeah, I'll stop there, thanks.
I mean, there are a couple-
Can I?
Go ahead, Mr. White.
I'll comment on that, because I think it would be kind of strange to have a slate put out a week before, say, 10 people have applied, and, I mean, especially with, say, like the Planning Commission, that 10 people have applied, and you are going to pick two, and you make it ahead of time what the mayor's picks are, and then we're asking everybody else to come and talk. It's like, it's already prejudged. It's like, it's already prejudged before the applicants have a chance to get up and, and speak, which the mayor has allowed to happen. And, and maybe he's not decided yet until after an applicant's gotten up and, and spoken. I'm not gonna speak for you, you can, but I think that would be a less transparent, 'cause what if he didn't make his decision prior to hearing what the applicants have to say at a public hearing? So, you know, I mean, it is the mayor's prerogative to, to appoint and ours to, to approve it. And, and I think that's what it is.
Well, you're here.
What we had, what we had before was, before we had an attorney that actually pointed out what the state law was, it was, it was to where one of the council members, it was like their turn to appoint the next planning commissioner, which was totally against, against the, you know, state charters or, or state law.
Could we do a two, a two-step process, for example? You go through the same thing you do now and then we wait for the, the two weeks later to make the final approvals? It's the same process, you at least have a sense of where you're going with it. Our problem is it's all done in the same meeting where you're really, you know, I voted for somebody that I felt uncomfortable voting, excuse me, voted against somebody that I didn't feel real comfortable voting against because I wasn't sure about the makeup. That made me feel a little uncomfortable. So I don't want that to happen, if we can avoid it. Really, that's my major concern.
I also think, we have something still on the books that says that all these people will be interviewed by two council members. And the last time planning commission appointments were made, I, I met with most of the applicants and there was a lot of confusion on the part of the applicant as to whether he should even come to the council meeting because he thought that he was gonna be told prior to that if he was going to be the selected person. And so I think we need to just sort of standardize our process. I personally find it very helpful when these people do come to the meetings. And of the seven people we appointed last time, I think, I, I know one of them was out of town. When I talked to him, he said he was leaving town, but I think four of them weren't even here. And, you know, I, I would hope that if you really wanted to be on the committee, you would come to the council and say what you had to say and it, it does help us, I think, make a decision. But I, it's not clear to me that our, we seem to have a few things published that maybe are inconsistent with how we're doing this.
I mean, what more can I say? The reality is that the application period closes. It often closes within just a few days before the city council meeting occurs. I'm interviewing folks. I make every effort to interview everybody that applies. Sometimes I'm interviewing some the weekend before the council meeting, some of this time I had not met before. And quite frankly, it's a joy to meet with people. And that's the process that I go through. And also, in terms of a slate, I don't want to put together a slate, quite frankly. I want to nominate, listen to fellow council members, and, and then see how the council members are reacting to the first person I've nominated, the second person I've nominated, that may impact the third person I've nominated, just in, in the, in, in terms of, of the way it goes. So.
Well, if I may interrupt, then it maybe, maybe then it puts the other council members in the position of saying, no, 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 to, to try to get some understanding of where you're going. Because if we don't know where you're going, we end up with a situation where we have citizens that are feeling left out, that portions of the community are feeling left out. That's why I believe we have five of us up here to help determine the best democratic situation. And, and yes, I, 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 I respect your guidance and your, your knowledge and many things about you.
That's good.
And, but we're working together, we're working together for, for the strongest community that we can have. And I believe that having the information helps us do that, helps us do that, helps us do our job of serving the community, serving the community that elected us.
Well, at this point, I think I've said all I'm going to, all I can say on the subject. I take the appointment power very seriously. I give it a lot of thought. And sure, when I come into meetings, I have some guidance in my mind as to where I think I'm gonna go, but I by no means have a completely closed view either. I want to hear from council members, I want to hear from the public. And as I say, in a process like this, which doesn't happen often where you're nominating a full committee, how the council has reacted to one candidate can affect my thinking with respect of where I go next. You know, that's the way it goes. But by state law, the power of appointment is in the mayor and I think any mayor would wish to preserve his or her power of appointment. I think it makes for a better city. There's a reason, something's in the statute.
I'm wondering if our city attorney has experience with other communities. I, I don't wanna hold you, put you on the spot, but is what we do sort of akin to what other communities do in Northern California?
It's a big question. I have seen communities do it differently. The appointment power is indeed vested with the mayor pursuant to state and your municipal code. But different community, general law, cities have adopted different procedures than the one that you have here, in my experience. And, you know, I work, I mean, this is not a cross-section of the entire state by any means currently. I've probably advised 10 cities or so and I'm aware of some different procedures.
I'm just, I'm wondering if it's worth our time to explore best practices, to see if we are sort of in the mainstream, I guess, with respect to our practices. That's what I would recommend, maybe not doing anything tonight, but just doing an exploration. Look at some cities and see what ideas are out there in terms of how they do this. I have no intention of trying to take away any power of the mayor, that is not my goal.
Mayor doesn't have much power to take away.
Yeah. That's true. But we have, we have an obligation to approve and so, I don't know, maybe, is that something worthy to explore and come back in a couple, you know, I don't know, just get a couple different scenarios and say, are we with, even within the ballpark? I think it's probably.
I'd be happy to look at that.
Well, I would.
I think we would have the attorney look at it.
I would want the city attorney to look at it. If we're gonna look at it, it's another expense to the city, but there we are. If the majority of the council wants the city attorney to look at it and come back and report, so be it. But again, I would also make the point that, that appointing a full committee is a rarity. Normally, you're appointing just one or two and this type of issue really doesn't come up.
Well, I would hope we could advertise sooner than, rather than later for the planning commission appointment or more that might be made at the end of June. And, you know, if we get four or five appointments or applications, close the process. I think that's one of the most difficult things about what we do, people who want to get on a committee and make the effort.
That's, is that agreeable to the city clerk?
Of course, it's already calendared.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Thank you very much, everybody. Enjoy the rest of the evening. There's actually a little bit left.